Thank you.
You back?
Yeah, I should be back now. Okay.
You're good. Mic on. Where'd you got your camera on back there, Preston?
Thanks, Preston.
Calling in.
Call this meeting to order in the City Council. It's April 2nd. If you'll join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good to see you all here tonight. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Um, Councilmember Lynn, please excuse me.
I believe he's on phone, though. Is he or...
He's on the phone.
We got him captured on the phone. So he's here but not here.
He's here but not in person.
Excellent. Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Welling? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, second. Any discussion on the motion? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the minutes for March 19th. Yeah, that's all right. That's okay. Any concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go on to the work session minutes for March 26th. Same thing there. Anything, any concerns for those? If not, we will acknowledge those as well. Go to the bills. Have a warrant register with today's date on it? Questions? Comments? Concerns?
It's only a one-pager.
It's only a one-pager? That's true.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Lynch, a motion. Mr. Perk, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. That's approved. We'll go on to the revenue and expenditure report for January. Questions? Comments? Mr. Sellers, making motion to accept. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Counsel, comments? Mr. Lynch, what's on your mind tonight, sir?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Mr. Lynn, are you... Can you hear us? Can you... Perk?
I think so.
We're having some technical difficulties, so we don't know if we'll...
I think the road closures and the overpasses have been fine.
Oh, now he's talking.
There he is.
Sorry, I had it on mute. Yeah, I've got nothing. Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Perk.
Anyway, the overpasses, the closures, that all seems to be going all right for the first day. See what happens as the weekends approach, but...
Still early in the season.
Still early.
Yes, sir. Mr. Welling?
I have nothing tonight.
Hey, Mr. Sellers?
Just wanted to congratulate Arts Inc. on a wonderful Celtic festival. They had around 2,500 people show up, many out of town, some of them from quite a ways away. Saw Connecticut license plate in our parking lot.
Connecticut, you say? Wow.
And, um, they did that and then they had the honors choir for the local kids and it was a success. About 100 kids from around the area, local and through Utah, came in and participated in that. So, doing good things and fun to see all the stuff happening. It's going to be interesting how it goes but it's fun to see things happening so quick. Weather changed and construction sites are booming. So that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Let's take a minute.
Just a little something that I've noticed on Main Street with the bridge closer, the overpass closer. We have traffic coming through with heavy, some 18-wheelers more than we usually do, diverting onto Main Street and plus we have all our little kitties out, you know, for enjoying the nice weather. And so it's going to be something to keep a... They don't know where they're going and then we have the little ones, too. So that's just something to keep in mind when if you're down there on Main Street with your little ones. And also, just as always, I thank our service members that are graciously and humbly serving our country, along with my son. Go 101st! I'm all there.
Thank you. I'll echo... I don't know what I've done on my computer here for a second, so bear with me. But now we're back. I'll echo the concerns for the road closures. Granted, it's only one day, but hopefully... I haven't had any phone calls yet. I suspect they're coming. But just a reminder to be patient with the construction workers and be patient with the effort as it is. Overpass certainly needs to be... Have some attention and as well as City View Drive. Both are good projects and benefit the community down the road, but the process itself is going to be a painful one. So if we can just have some extra patience for that, for those projects. We have no... Well, we do have a public hearing. Special orders, an update from Representative Conrad. Please, sir, tell us what's on your mind.
Mayor, members of the council, thanks sincerely for the privilege to be in front of you today. I just want to give you a quick recap, specifically as it relates to the most recent legislative session, which I think there's some impact to you, the city, as well as this county. Specifically, I'll talk first and foremost with regards to property tax. There were five total property tax bills, four of which were approved. Just for your information, if you have not read nor seen House Bill 3, are those folks who are 65 years of age or older have lived in their home or a home and are paid Wyoming taxes for 25 years, they're eligible for 50% off of their property tax. That becomes effective 1 January of '25. The next three that I'll talk about are immediate. The next bill is House Bill 4. That's the expansion of the refund program for those folks who make up to 165% of the median income in Uton County, they're eligible for a refund. If recall, last year, we raised that from 100% to 105%. This year, we raised that to 125%. Just as an FYI, your median income in the Uton County is $77,000. So if you make up to 165% of that $77,000, you are eligible for a refund. If you did apply for a refund last year, the state or the Department of Revenue will send you that proactive form beginning in April. But if you do want to take advantage of that, please check with our county here as well as myself. The other bill, Senate File 89, pretty happy about that. I co-sponsored that one as well. That is for our veterans. Speaking of veterans earlier, if you're a veteran, your ad valorem tax exemption has always been $3,000. It's been that way for 10 to 15 years. We passed legislation that raises that value to $6,000. That's advantageous as well. The other bill that I co-sponsored was House Bill 45 and that bill did pass and it is effective immediately. And that is a 4% cap on your property taxes. So if your property taxes rise anything above 4%, they are capped at 4%. So if they rise to 50%, 24%, or 19%, the maximum value that can elevate is 4%. If for some reason, which has happened in Uton County, the value goes down, that follows it. So it's 3%. It goes to 3%. But that cap did come through. So those are the four bills and outside of the long-term homeowners, those three are effective immediately. And I should share with you as well that you're eligible for all three. So if you take advantage of one, you can take... You're not ineligible for the other two. So you can take all of those, which is, I think, very advantageous in this market of increasing property tax values. So I'm happy about that. As you well know, Senate File 54 gained a lot of emotion. That was what was vetoed by Governor Gordon. That was a property tax exemption of 25% off of your value if your home is valued at $2 million or low or below. That passed with a supermajority, both in the House and Senate. And unfortunately, the governor did veto that. That's what prompted the most recent discussions surrounding a special session. The special session was voted on. It did not succeed. Therefore, there will be no special session. But rest assured, that bill will be coming back in the interim. The second bill that I want to share with you that passed was House Bill 70. That's local government dispersments. We were able to raise that from $105 million to $146 million. What does that mean for Evanston specifically? Your biennium distribution now will be $1.817 million or over two years, $908,795,000. So I think that's a positive, too, to put the hands, to put money back into the cities, the counties, and municipalities. Those are two highlights. The other area that I wanted to share with you and bring you up to date, as you likely recall, let me get my notes specific here. You'll likely recall a discussion that we had last year as it related to the resolution. That resolution was 2406. And to engage your minds here, that was to engage the state of Wyoming in obtaining a transfer of real property and improvements comprising a portion of the Wyoming State Hospital for Economic Development. You'll likely recall that. The bill was 5 to 2. With that information, I went back to Cheyenne and I just want to make a couple of notes here that we agreed, or more importantly, you did as the city of Evanston, you've been committed to attracting needed employment and economic development opportunities for citizens in its community. The governing body of the city of Evanston supports the expression of interest in the state of Wyoming and its request of conveyance of approximately 66 acres and 21 buildings and all of the improvements located within for the express purpose of economic development by the private sector. The sale of land and the improvements of the private sector. Section 2 stated that the expression of interest should address the need to transfer to be made with a stated consideration of economic development. With that understanding, I went back and pursued the wishes of the five members of the council, but the resolution as well. Within that, I was able to meet with the senior staff attorney for Governor Gordon, more importantly, the Legislative Service Office. And we were able to construct the following resolution. And I'll just highlight that and I won't read much of it, but just for your information. And the whole purpose and goal of this, if you recall, was to get a stay, for lack of a better word, for one year, to pursue private interest in the hospital. What we agreed to in that meeting that was held with two senior staff attorneys, myself and Representative Lloyd Larson out of Lander, what we agreed upon, which was passed overwhelmingly by the Senate and the House, was this amendment. That amendment's H.3081. Specifically, the department shall not demolish the Boiler House, shall not fill in any underground tunnels, shall not demolish the state residence, the staff residence, I'm sorry, which is called Building 8 within the Myers-Anderson report, the duplex building, Clark Hall, Building 15, as well as the Clark Hall dormitory, dormitory, or sorry. One of the agreements that was very consistent with, or more importantly, very important to Representative Larson's is that if there's any change in the amendment of the original resolution, or more importantly, the original budget amendment of $3.4 million to destroy the 10 buildings as well as construct a rigid, large storage building, was a fact that the RMPs, RFPs, had already been sent out. Representative Larson was concerned about the cost, the cost of the change in this particular amendment to restrict, or more importantly, to remove this amendment with those particular buildings included. The cost of that was primarily postage. Representative Larson was very clear in his admonition that, in this fact would be, we make sure that the state is not held liable for those costs. I stated very clearly that any cost of postage is, anything that they're referring about, I would pay for it. I'd pay for the cost of postage. I would pay for the changes that were necessary, whether it was an email or the time constructing an email that says, hey, the original RFP was to destroy all 10 buildings. It's not 10 now. It's just these six. I said I'd pay for that. So with that understanding, we were able to read that budget amendment, which I just read to you, which did again pass overwhelmingly within the House and the Senate and ultimately went through the appropriate considerations to the joint, more importantly, the budget in this case, which you've probably heard a lot about. There was a billion-dollar difference between the House and Senate. We were able to narrow that down. But that amendment, as I just read to you, stayed. Again, I was going to pay for the postage. When the voting occurred for the actual amendment, Representative Larson, to his credit, gave me a letter. I'd like to read from this letter. "I was dismayed by Mr. Conrad's representation of the city council, city of Evanston's wishes regarding the campus. I assure you that the group that he purports to represent is very small and a very vocal group, none of which, including Mr. Conrad, has been elected or appointed to speak for the city as a whole. Additionally, I appreciate our previous inclusion in the discussions regarding the campus over the last many years and assure you that, as one actually elected to speak for the city as a whole, I agree wholeheartedly with your comments on the floor. My best, Mayor Williams." Mayor Williams, despite your best interests or more importantly, your best efforts to thwart and undermine my efforts and the efforts of this council, the five members, my work was successful. We were able to gather that and more importantly, that year. When Governor Gordon received this amendment, he stated the following in Footnote 16 of his line item veto for the budget. "The demolition of the state hospital has been a topic of conversation during several budget sessions. The Department of Health and the State Construction Department have offered to reissue a bid package for the first step of demolition to be more accommodating to the legislative request." That's my request. That's your request. "To request a one-year delay and work on demolishing the other structures outside of the four that I just listed that are lesser concern to the repurposing advocates, that's small but vocal group. Reissuring the demolition bid package would take some time to complete. Therefore, there is no reason to charge the town of Evanston for any incurred costs. However, the legislature has given direction and the means to start a years-long work of mitigating the safety and environmental risk to the state, of letting the abandoned buildings at the state hospital continue to deteriorate. I urge all involved to keep in mind that waiting even one more year results in significantly increased costs to repurpose or demolish. Inflation, particularly in construction, has resisted any downward market pressures. I note that anyone who has paying attention for the last six years knew the demolition of these buildings was coming. We've had that discussion in here. I have worked to encourage several to take advantage of the opportunities this property could provide. I haven't found any takers and therefore will not support a further delay or additional liability unless, unless an acceptable plan to repurpose the designated structures can be proffered by the local advocates within the next 12 months." So, Mayor, members of the council, based on your resolution, we did achieve that year delay. We also absolved any cost to the city of Evanston. My question to you now, will this council, and more importantly, this city, support the manpower necessary to pull together RFPs and perform, or more importantly, construct and build a viable RFP that I, you, and we can go back and demonstrate to the governor of Wyoming that we have a viable plan that doesn't incur a cost to the city of Evanston but more importantly allows economic development, job creation, and the saving of these historic buildings? The city of Evanston obviously has an economic development coordinator and I'd like to enlist, or more importantly, propose for your consideration, he should drive this. I can't drive it by myself. Many of us have packed this. We've got it on the one-inch line. We started out 50 yards behind. So with all due respect, Mayor, disappointing that you didn't have the ability or more importantly, the ability to reach out to me and then share with you my insights. So, that concludes my comments and I stand by for any questions the mayor of the council may have.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Conrad, and I'm disappointed myself. I'm questioned, I guess, when you talk about this, when you decided to put forth this amendment. Did you have any discussions with members of this council or members of the community?
Yes, sir.
Who were they?
That would be Councilman Les Jesse Lynn
Okay.
and Councilwoman Hagaman.
Okay. And I'm disappointed that I wasn't included in that discussion. Is there a reason why I was not, sir?
Based on my understanding that it was a member of the council. They were the ones that voted and I took their, more importantly, their input for this discussion.
So that you allowed them?
They are the conduit.
Is that correct?
They are the conduit for this council. They challenged, they championed, or more importantly, asked me to move forward. I did with their input and I championed it.
Is there a reason why I wasn't included in that discussion
That's a question I can't answer, Mayor.
or more importantly, the body of this council?
That's a question of those three folks.
Keeping in mind, this council is the only group that has been authorized to actually speak for the city.
Mm-hmm.
Is that true? And in your resolution, in your resolution, I don't see anywhere where you personally were going to cover the cost of anything, albeit a small amount.
You're right, that did not appear. But in my conversations with the LSO, specifically Mr. Fuller, as well as Mr. Larson, it was very, very clear. An understanding we likely could get this across the goal line with Governor Gordon in the elimination of any cost to the city of Evanston. It was a conduit to pacify and to satisfy Representative Larson.
Some of the buildings that you identified to remove or protect from demolition are... Maybe I'm wrong, but identified in the study for demolition. Is there a reason why those were excluded? Is that...
Yes. Based on input that I had.
From?
Councilmembers Hagaman, Councilmember Lynn, that these were the appropriate buildings that should be saved from an economic development as or construction, as Mr. Sellers as well. I failed to... I apologize, Mr. Sellers. I failed to mention his name. So three of the five who voted for it.
Well, I guess we're equally disappointed, then.
And will remain so.
I suspect. What is the status, then, of this particular amendment currently?
The amendment did pass with line item vetoes and specifically, if you have the amendment in front of you, I can share with you, based on Governor Gordon, Page 4, his line item veto dated March 22nd, specifically on Page 23 of the budget amendment. As a condition of this general fund, that has been stripped. That's 16, Item A. "The Department of Health shall take the following actions." The other line item veto is on Page 23, 16-I. "The department shall not fill in any underground tunnels that have been filled in as the effective date of this act." Continuing on Page 24 of the resolution, House enrolled Act 50 for clarity. Item B. "Before revising any design plans, requests for proposal or bid documents in accordance with this footnote, the Department of Health shall determine what costs will be incurred as a result of the requirements of this subsection of this subsection and shall enter into an agreement with the city of Evanston for the city to incur any costs as it results in changes to the design plan, requests for proposal or bid documents as a result of Subsection A." That has been stricken. Lastly, Item C. "Nothing in this footnote should be construed to impair or alter any agreement or contract entered before this effective date of the act."
That was also stricken.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Mr. Mayor? Representative Conrad, who did you say that you would like to help you?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The city of Evanston's economic development coordinator, and I think that's Rocco O'Neil.
Would that not be an incur, incur a cost to the city if he does that work?
But I believe the city will ultimately benefit from this effort. Threefold.
But what you're saying is that would... There would be no cost to the city. You've said that several times.
I did.
That would be a cost to the city.
Respect... Mayor, respectfully, the cost to the city was based on the resolution. That's what I was referring to. Specifically, only. Now, if we want to push this Now, if we want to push this to you and the Economic Development Committee, we can do so, and I'll champion that effort. But I think as a city, it's in the city. Why wouldn't we engage and support such an activity for economic development, which, by the way, is included throughout the resolution?
Not everybody supports it.
Agreed. But you have five members out of seven here that do. And from where I come from, that's a majority.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Conrad?
Oh, a comment?
Please.
That I met with you and Diane Harris a year, a little over a year ago, about the hospital. We talked for an hour and a half, and I said I was pursuing this, and you filled me in on the background, all the stuff on it. And after an hour and a half, it was concluded that, you know, you had no interest in it, and you didn't want to pursue it. And I said, with all due respect, I'm going to keep going, and you said, fine. So that's one thing. We've had rallies, we've had Facebook Lives, we've had all of this stuff. You have voted twice against it. Why would a red carpet be rolled out when all the information was sitting three chairs down from you from the very beginning, let alone with Conrad? I've been here the whole time. And when you say the council supports it, and you write letters on behalf of the, this is the second one that I've found out about. The first one was February 28th to the Secretary of Transportation on my behalf. You don't speak for me, and you don't speak for my constituents. And when you're writing these letters, you out, saying that you are the only one that represents this city. You just nixed all of our votes and every single citizen that we represent. It's disrespectful.
I'll politely disagree with what you're saying, and I don't expect a red carpet from anyone. What I had hoped for with this, with an amendment such as this that would encumber city funds, I would conclude that the likely, likelihood would be that I, as the mayor, and the council as a whole, would be involved in that discussion. And as far as the state hospital buildings go, what I have said from the very beginning is that it is a state decision, and I am concerned for the city of Evanston incurring liability with regard to those buildings. Whether they stay, whether they go, it is a state decision, and that's been my stance from the beginning. As far as the parking lot structure goes, I don't know where you're going with that, but...
It has to do with you writing letters on behalf of this council that I knew nothing about.
I don't know that I write letters on behalf of the council. If I write somebody a letter, it is by the mayor, and the community will hold me responsible for that. And I'll deal with that at any time.
I hope they do.
I suspect you're not alone. Anything else for Mr. Conrad? Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Appreciate your work. Is there any concerns with our consent agenda?
I'm a little confused on the parade route for the marathon, if we can kind of get some clarity there.
Shall we pull that one off and talk about it?
Pull that one separate, and then the two cowboy days can go together.
Okay. Shall we do that, the two cowboy days, then we'll go to the next one? So we'll remove the parade route from the, you're talking about the Hyuendas?
Correct. I'm just confused.
Okay. Let's pull that off, and our consent agenda then will be comprised of the parade route and the malt beverage permit relative to cowboy days. Is there a motion on our consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Mr. Wellington, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Parade route, what can you tell us, Rocco?
Mayor, members of the council, Rocco O'Neil, City of Evanston, Community Development This is the same route we've done for the last four years for the half marathon. Obviously, the overpass closure and routing traffic through the underpass has created a little bit of hesitation. So I know that there are some, there are some concerns from the Public Works Department and the Police Department. We're working through those with our board and Chief Ranish and Damon and Gordon. The idea of getting this in front of you today was that we could approve the route as it is, work with those department heads on the necessary officers and signage and enclosures were necessary. And after a few weeks, if we determine that Route A, this route in front of you is not feasible, then we can move to Route B or an alternate route and bring that back in front of you.
How many days is this going to...
So we...
...traffic or...
It's spread way out, way out.
We bus the runners from the Bear Ponds at, right about 6:00 AM, out to Sulphur Creek. The race starts at 7:00.
It's fairly early in the morning.
It's fairly early in the morning. Like Mr. Perks said, there are runners that finish in, you know, a couple hours, and then there are runners that finish in...
Four, five.
A little bit longer. There's a time limit after, is it the three-hour mark, Chief? Any runner...
Yeah, it's specified there, and I can remember, there are things like about three or four hours in there, possible assist, and then that, each individual runner is required to follow rules and rig of this, Jay.
Concerns?
I'll just reiterate what Rocco has said to you. Nathan Preet is taking the time to meet with us. He's been excellent to work with, and I understand momentum of having established race. You don't want to postpone that race because of construction, because you lose momentum, and you don't always give back the runners you had the previous year. He's been excellent to work with, and I know we're going to have issues ironing out, but I'm confident that we'll be able to work through these, and the route should work with minor tweaking.
Okay.
I'm happy with that, but I just worry about the safety of the runners, and this is an unusual year, so whatever we can do to help the runners out, I'd appreciate it.
We do plan on, this year, we're going to have to have more officers than we did previous year, and, but I don't see a way around it.
I think the race in and of itself is a benefit to the community. I think it's a fun race. My wife and I participated in the walk a few years. It's been a fun thing, but with the overpass being closed and all that, it does pose some issues.
And Mr. Preet's been very forthcoming. He's emphasized that if we do start identifying problems we didn't foresee previous to the race, he's willing to work with us and reapproach the council for a reroute.
Kind of numbers we're looking at, racers?
So last year in the half marathon and 5K total, we had about just over 200 participants. This year, we're actually ahead of pace from last year's registration, so you never know until the day of, yeah. Well, really, the night before for packet pickup, so.
Any other questions? No. Motion to approve. Wellington, a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second that.
Mr. Lynch, seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's true. Thank you, and thank you for that additional information. We'll go on to new business. We got a discussion and possible action on the Roundhouse Trailhead Access Improvement Project bids. Mr. Newsom, you're our man of the minute now, is that true?
I guess so. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Damon Newsom, City of Evanston. I stand before you here tonight really just seeking guidance and direction towards the Roundhouse Courtyard project. This is a project that involves TAP grant money, or TAP funds, Transportation Alternative Funds from YDOT, and it's basically federal money. This project really got kicked off in the latter part of 2020. So there was an estimate made, funds requested from the feds and YDOT. The kicker with the timeline of 2020 was the estimate that was given is blown out of the water. The TAP grant amount that was given to the city was $356,000 and change. Of that 356, about 56 was earmarked for planning and design and all that stuff. Going into this project, there was an estimated cost of $613,000, and it was known by, I think Dean came up to the council, a resolution was passed, and the city would most likely match and overmatch to a dollar amount of $256,000. With that being said, the bids for this courtyard project were open last Thursday, and they came in in a tune of 1.45 million. So you're talking about a net difference of potentially 1.1, 1.2 million that we don't have available to us. So I guess I, I'm looking for the guidance of maybe how to move forward and some options that we can still try and pursue in an effort to hopefully get something done.
That's a big difference. Yeah, it's a huge difference.
And I don't think the estimate was necessarily wrong back in 2020, as we all know, things have really turned. And so knowing how the bids came in, we had two bidders. Of those two bidders, very competitive within each other, the net difference between the two bidders was just over 14,000 bucks. So it's not one, one was substantially different than the other. But ultimately, with these funds that have been set aside on our behalf from the feds, they have an expiration date, which is December of this year.
Okay.
It is my understanding that that has been extended once before, and it is unknown if they're willing to extend it again. This is really 2021 money, and, you know, eventually asked to get used or put away. So the way I see it is we move forward with the bids as is, or we can reject the bids and try and downsize the project. Ideally, you know, we put out the project with all the fancy bells and whistles and some of the requests on behalf of what the Roundhouse would be with rail tracks and some of the historical features, but if willing, I think we can downsize some of that and come in a little bit less.
A bit closer?
I'm not saying that the city won't have a big cost of maybe 600,000. Even if we got it to a million, we're talking still a burden of 600. And if we lose the timeline, in essence, the work can't be done, and we lose those $300,000 that at least we're trying to use.
Puts us even that far, that much farther behind, doesn't it? But we do have, we do have a little bit of time to play with right now, is that not correct? Do we have that?
Yeah, I've got Gareth with Forsgren, and ultimately, if we were told to reject and try and downsize, our goal would be to try and get those plans back out for bid, we'll say in May, in hopes that it can be approved and accepted come June, and allow the project to be finished, we'll say by the end of October. With that, since I found out quickly that we didn't have enough potential funds, I have applied for a new TAP grant request. Those TAP grants are really in the application phase right now, and they don't get decided until about November. So they're still an unknown if more money can be added to the pot, in all reality. Go ahead, Mr. Sellers.
So is there like a single item of that whole plan that we can just say, it's going, this is going to be this much, and it's going to give us a big bang that we can build from in the future, so we're not, I mean, a million dollars is a huge, is a huge mountain to fund.
It is.
And so if we could say, if we took this part and just did this part, then the next TAP grant or the next, next money we have, then we can do this part, just kind of...
The way this project's set up, though, it's kind of an all-or-nothing deal, because you have to remove the tracks that existed coming out of the Roundhouse. There's the asbestos dirt contamination removal, and then in essence, basically pouring that back with concrete. I don't know if we found a good way to do parts and pieces without trying to do the whole.
Yeah.
That's the unfortunate part of this. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Powell, please.
Gareth Powell with Forsgren. I mean, another aspect to that we have to consider is we already have the brewery going in, and so if we pick and choose, there's going to be gaps, you know, and so we can't just say, let's do Bay 4, or Bay 3, or Bay 2, because then that leaves a lot of dirt gaps and kind of takes away from the whole aesthetic aspect we're trying to achieve with it. And so really, we haven't come up with a good solution to piecemeal it. It's a matter of, we're just going to have to take some things out, but then everybody's going to have to be okay with that.
Yeah.
We do think we can take some of the rail components. We obviously know we need tracks coming out of where the trains come in the city. Maintain just maybe one set of tracks. Get rid of some of the faux rail components, and if time and money allows in the future, try and cut those in or make them more resemblance of a rail. We can take a little bit of lighting out and try and chase back 500, maybe 600,000 at best.
Yeah. I don't, it may be hard. I think also, maybe just throwing this out there, is I think, once we got over a million dollars, and some of those contractors couldn't get their bonding. And so if we could scale that back, I think we may pick up more than just two, you know, and get some more competitive bids, or some people that could actually be a little more competitive and that want to do the work and maybe sharpen their pencil. I'm not saying these guys don't want to, and I'm okay with either one of them, but it's just, you know, we've lost some of our littler guys that may have been able to do this due to the amount of money that...
Yeah.
And this is, these type of funds, being federal funds, you really can't award it to a contractor and then cut half of it.
Right.
It's not fair bidding practices to do that. So there's no offering and taking back to the magnitude we're talking about, Dave.
That answered my question.
Did you have a question?
No, he just answered my question.
Well, I, you're right. I guess, I guess I'm trying to, this is a tough decision to make tonight. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here that, I'm wondering if we need to just put this on ice for a second and visit at a work session or something, or what we just...
I agree with the work session. It'd be nice to be able to actually walk down there and see what you guys are talking about, these different rails. And I'm not above having a work session down there, and then maybe finish up in the Portland Rose Room or something, you know, where we can actually have a meeting and visualize and know what we're looking at.
Part of the reason I brought it to this forum was, A, to get direction if we should even send it to YDOT, because really, YDOT has to review the bids we got and get, make sure that all the paperwork's in order, and/or go back to the drawing board really quick so we can get this back out in a timely fashion. That was the ultimate.
What would your, do you have a recommendation to make tonight? Do you have, what is your, what would your, I'm putting you on the spot, but this is, this is a...
I think we've kind of...
This is a lot to digest.
I told him you would ask that.
You know, I think we've come to the consensus that 1.45 is hard to swallow, and redesigning ultimately is our best effort, and still being able to get the work done this year within combination of the Shades Brewery. Our reluctance is, if we keep dragging this out, that, A, we lose the money if it doesn't get extended, and B, then costs increase. And if it's even let in the fall, then contractors are bidding for what if price inflations for next year's work, and they have to hold those bids through the winter. So I think we're at the option of reject and downsize and move forward, knowing that it's going to be a cost more than the 256 that was already earmarked for overmatch.
The other thing that's going on in my mind is we have a tenant that's going to be in that fourth section here soon, and this is going to affect them and what we've kind of promised or indicated. This is, and the bids are real close. Both bids are real close, so it's not like they're out in the ball field somewhere.
When we looked at all the prices, I mean, some of, one of the bigger costs was putting the rail back in.
Oh.
And we had four sections, one to each bay.
Uh-huh.
We already know Shades Brewery doesn't, I mean, they've already ripped all their tracks out, they're not even having one in there. So I mean, from my standpoint, that's a no-brainer, you could throw that one out, but there's still the possibility of getting rid of the other two, and not that we want to take away from the aesthetic appearance and promote that historical evidence of it, but cutting some of those items back could really help our costs. Granted, the faux rail, I mean, there's a lot of faux rail in there, and that accentuates costs, because they have to hand trial it, color it, et cetera.
Yeah.
But the other option is, is we could do half of those with the possibility, if it's not very what everybody appears, we could always go back and cut it and then stain the concrete to try and match it in.
And I know Gareth and Dean looked at it really hard, but those rails coming out created some grade problems, because you're coming out level and you're trying to drain water to a drain. So there was a lot of intricate grading on behalf of just putting sidewalk down flat, if you will. And if we take some of those out, I think that'll help the costs as well.
We didn't want bird bass, but we still had to maintain grades and slopes because of the whole trail aspect and handicap accessible, accessibility to it, and still make sure the water flowed to certain drains.
Right. I guess I'm at a loss.
Tough decision, and I don't disagree.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Harris?
But I don't know if that's the luxury we have at this point, but that's just me.
Gareth, start working on it.
Mr. Mayor, when I was talking with Mr. Newsom, my first reaction was that if I were looking at it, I would reject the bids, you know, working on a modified bid package. And during that time, then, to address Councilmember Perks's question, the council could go and look itself and get an idea of what it is, so they can get back out the bid. I think that when we did the extension of the TAP grant agreement, which we did earlier in '24, that that came before the council. You remember that? I think we extended it to December 31 of this year.
Yes, right.
Remember? So we were under that timeline to get that completed by that time. So I think that the other alternative is you accept the apparent low bid at 1.4, whatever it is.
Yeah. I don't know that we can afford that, so...
So my recommendation would be is you reject the bids, modify your bid package, and see where you come out.
I think that's, I think that's kind of where I'm, where I'm thinking. What's your pleasure?
That's kind of where I was coming, coming from as well, but I was just trying to just put the thought out there, what can we, what could we focus on instead of just the whole, downsizing the whole project, so.
I think we have to cut out components of the whole rather than start and stop.
And that makes sense, so. I liked the, Councilman Perks talk about us going down there and just looking and getting some idea. I like that idea.
I like the idea of having a work session over there and going over it.
Yeah, reject, reject, and then start.
Need formal action if we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I love the idea, and that at least gives maybe guidance to the design changes, but the sooner we can make that decision to shift gears and redesign it, helps get it back out.
I think we need to reject either way.
Do you need a formal action on that rejection?
Yes. You need a motion to reject the bids and second, and then...
That's the way we're thinking. I'll entertain the...
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch with a motion to reject the bids. Mr. Sellers, you're seconding that, is that correct? You're seconding that? Any discussion on the, on the motion?
I don't know if I, I can share what the bids were if you want to look.
I think we... I think we trust your judgment. We see what they are.
I suspect the spreadsheet added it up right.
I suspect you did.
I don't question that.
But I appreciate that. Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Those bids are rejected. We'll have to get busy air quick and be prompt about this so that we can get this done as quick as we can.
So basically, we'll just meet first before we jump in, is what you're going to do?
Yeah, we'll have it...we'll put it on probably next week, maybe, if that can be arranged.
And then at that point, you'll give direction, which way you want it?
See what we want to do, yeah.
Does that give you enough time?
Yeah. Does that give you enough time?
Well, we passed this out over a week now, a couple of days.
Four days, yeah.
And we've come to a lot of different conclusions. And really, it comes down to my staff trying to turn it around as quick as possible. So that's what I want to do, is turn it around, give it out to bid, because I think that's really our best option instead of prolonging things.
Okay. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Our next item is to motion to approve the number of days for lawful discharge of fireworks. Fourth of July is on a Thursday this year, and so it seems reasonable, I guess, that we would suspect 4th, 5th, and 6th.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Perks?
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion on the motion?
Y'all alumni reunion runs those days.
So we'll do all kinds of fireworks then.
It's on your...next year.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have fireworks. Our next...now, I may have...I'm going to go to this next item. I may have failed to put this on the agenda. Did I do that?
That's all right, Mr. Mayor. It's...if you'll announce it, we can tell you what happened, the item.
Okay, so I've got a motion here to accept the apparent low bid for three Ram 1500 crew cab special services vehicles for the police department.
Correct.
And now, did I do something wrong about this one here?
No, no. Chief is going to tell you what happened.
Okay. Tell us what we're doing, Chief.
Yes, sir, Mayor, members of the council. So there was some confusion on this. We did our legal advertisement. Bid packages were required to be to the City of Evanston 30 minutes before close on Friday. We opened the bid packages, and we reviewed them. And Fremont Motors had submitted a bid. And on the bid sheet, there's boxes to check if everything qualifies. And for some reason, Fremont Motors written down one of the bid requirements is rear seat legroom of at least 40 inches. And this is important because we have to put cages in the backseat, and we need legroom, obviously, for prisoners. They listed 35.6 inches. I'm not sure why they put that note in there. So we felt that they did not meet the bid requirements, and we advised the city clerk in order to get the council packages out. Monday morning, we pulled everything apart, reviewed it closer. And both dealers, and I'm sure Councilman Lynch would probably recognize this, both dealers provided within their bid package is a configuration preview. And both dealers had listed the same exact model. And it gets a little...I have some concerns because Ram basically has three different extended cabs. They got the mega, the quad, and the crew cab. And one of those cabs has a shorter back door, and that's one would not work for our task of putting people in the backseat. And so we went through these configuration previews, and they're actually both the same regular full-sized rear door pickup trucks, what they refer to as the Ram SSV special service vehicle. So we did find out Monday morning, we called a dealer and confirmed it, that the bid from Fremont Motor Company actually does meet the specifications. And that was...that's what caused the last-minute change.
Okay.
So what are we voting on?
Well, what I'm requesting, Mayor, and members of the council, is that we go ahead and accept the bid from Fremont Motor as the low bidder for the purchase price of three full-sized Ram trucks for the Evanston Police Department for a total cost of $122,931.
Okay.
They're pretty close.
It was nice to see the local dealership get back into the game.
It was.
It was close. It was close.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor, members of the council. There's $395 difference per vehicle.
Oh, well, they're close.
Yeah, that's the closest I've ever seen it.
Was there a date on this?
I never...
I'm sorry, Councilmember Welling. We request before July 1, but that's always up in the air.
Okay, this year?
Hopefully, sir.
I'll entertain a motion on this bid.
I have a question.
Please.
Between the two bids, the Fremont and Lander and the Rocky Mountain Yeti in Evanston, if I've done my math right, which is probably not correct, but it looks like we're $1,000 apart. Is that right? Wouldn't we get that back in taxes? Wouldn't we get that back in revenue here by keeping it local? I'm looking at 122,931. Am I looking at the wrong stuff?
Mayor, Councilmember Hagman, my understanding is by Wyoming State statute, there's a 5% preferential for in-state. But the reason...our decision, I would prefer to have a local dealer too, and maybe the city attorney can advise on this. But my understanding is Wyoming State statute limits us to actually having the honor of the low bidder being in-state.
Will they deliver these?
This part of the bid package, yes, delivered.
Okay, good. Here's my only question.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
The chief is correct. The statutes provide for a 5% preference, but it's for in-state. And the Wyoming Supreme Court's made it clear that when a municipality...and it was done before. Where a municipality may say, we're going to give a 5% additional preference to an in-community vendor or supplier. And Wyoming Supreme Court said, well, you can't do that because that conflicts with the statute that's in effect.
I'll entertain a motion then to approve this bid.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor, that we accept the bid from Fremont Motor, correct?
That's correct, sir.
The lowest bidder.
I will second that.
Seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you.
Resolution 2416. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2416, a resolution to place the 1/2% sales tax, sales and use tax for economic development question on the 2024 primary election ballot.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Neill?
Mayor, members of the council, this resolution is what we discussed at last week's work session. I've also attached our slide deck that we put together. I don't know if you want me to go over this again or if you want...if you have questions that I'm happy to answer for you.
I think it's pretty straightforward to me. I think we're...there's questions for Mr. O'Neill before we move forward.
We're just authorizing the citizens to make the decision, basically.
Correct, yeah. Yes, this is simply the ballot measure. We haven't decided yet.
One of those.
One of those, yes. We want to get it all together ahead of time so we can do primary or general.
And this will ultimately, down the road, come with some community involvement and some community education to get a feel for it. And ultimately, the voters of the community will decide.
Correct, correct, yeah. Once we get the 50% approval from the municipalities, we'll get to work on communicating how we'll use this revenue for the county and ultimately, the communities.
And how much is that going to cost? Because we've got to educate the people on this. They've got to make the decision. And, you know, it's only fair. So are we going to put this behind...you know, how are we going to get it out to them?
Yeah, we've had conversations with a firm, an in-state firm out of Teton County to help us with that, Frederick Mountain Group. They've given us a time and materials not to exceed number. And so, you know, once these resolutions pass, we'll start that conversation up again and get to work on a contract with them.
That'll be another decision down the road to make as well.
Yes.
Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Sellers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion?
I just have big concerns about this. I mean, we're asking our citizens for more money. We don't have a concrete plan on how we're going to educate them about this. And they don't get to vote on what it is that we spend the money on, should it go through. And we don't have a great track record of doing that. I mean, we have, you know, anything from the kayak to the, you know, the properties all around town that are still sitting here doing nothing that we've done with. We don't market the railroad or the roundhouse, which is a gold mine. We don't market the things we already have, and we're searching for more money to build stuff that we don't follow through with. So I have a big issue with this, especially because they can't vote on how we spend it.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and disagree with you on virtually everything you said there. I think we have an excellent track record of economic development. For 30-plus years, we've done an excellent job. We've led the state in economic development for a community of 11,000. It started with a gentleman back there in the back row, and through Amy, and now to myself, and councils have led that. I am supremely confident that we will put together a plan that the community will support and be excited about.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Nay.
Hagman with the no. Thank you. Resolution 2417. Mr. Harris, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Resolution 2417, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, approving change order numbers 2 and 3 for the Roundhouse Section 4 tenant gray shale and loading facilities project in the City of Evanston.
Had to go back and get more papers.
I don't know why I walked back there. Mayor, members of the council, a few meetings back, I mentioned that we would have a deductive change order coming from Tanner Construction. This is that change order. It's a little bit more than we were expecting. We were able to VE out some of the ice melt systems, changing materials, PEX instead of copper, reducing the amount of rooftop units, et cetera. But I will warn you, there will be some change orders for the concrete cuts and some other things coming down the line. But this gives us a pretty good cushion to work with.
Is there introduction on this resolution?
All in favor of the motion, pass.
Mr. Welling, is there a second?
I'll second.
So Rock, when you say...
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Go ahead, Mr. Sellers.
How much are you saving with changes?
So, yeah, the value's on there. I think it's 151 and some change.
Mr. Mayor, the deduct is 151, 539, 14. Change order number 3 is a increase 63, 556, 71.
Okay. So that's a net decrease?
Yes.
Yes, that's a net decrease. Excuse me, I don't have it in front of me. I apologize.
It's a net increase of about 90, give or take. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2418. Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Resolution 2418, a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing execution of the employer's plan selection and notice and acknowledgement required by Wyoming Educators Benefit Trust, Web T, to continue the city's medical plan for city employees.
Thank you, sir.
This is our annual renewal for the employees' health insurance and vision insurance. They also provide our life insurance. We've been with Web T since 2006. Our average increase over those years has been 6.8%. If you remember, last year, it was 13.5% increase. This year, we're looking at a 10% increase. We thought at one time they were going to do away with $1,000 deductible, but they did not. And they did not charge us a surcharge that they had mentioned that that might happen. So when I brought this to the staff to discuss, I think everybody was in agreement that we go ahead and just renew this year with this plan. It's a good benefit for our employees and good insurance.
It's kind of one of those things you...I don't want to call it a necessary evil, but it's kind of feels that way oftentimes.
You don't want to bring it up to them that, oh, you said you were going to do this and charge us more money, so you...
No.
That's a tough...
They're really good to work with, so...
Insurance is an incredible benefit for those that can offer it as far as employers go, so...
I'll introduce.
Mr. Sellers, you're introducing it?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Okay. Did you vote a motion with that? Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thanks, Judy. Comments from departments? Do you have anything more for us?
Thank you.
Mr. Newsom, do you have anything more for us tonight? Mr. O'Neill? Chief Rannish? It's Harris.
No, Your Honor.
It's Harris.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you all. Public participation. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason? No? If not, we'll adjourn. Thank you.